Good morning, my calling, sending the order. This is Amher County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October twenty second, two thousand twenty four. Would you please join us in pledge of allegiance? Well, thank you. The board met in closed session this morning. Items we made on item number one, confidence for labor negotiators, direction was given. Item two, confidence real property negotiators, update and direction was given. And item three, confidence terms were approved. With that, do we have any members of public that could address this board on any item that's not on the agenda? And if you'd like to do so, please sign in, state your name for the record, and you have like three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. I've already signed in, but my name is John Aldaya.
John Aldaya.
Yes, sir. I own a one hundred and thirty-two acre parcel in Stato Creek. Um, the main reason why I'm here is gonna take a lot longer than three minutes to discuss. Uh, but the main reason why I'm standing before you today is I have tried to reach out to you, Supervisor Onetto, multiple, multiple times, uh, to discuss this issue with you, and I'm not getting any response. I've sent emails, uh, my counsel has sent emails, I have left voicemails, made multiple phone calls, and there's been zero response. I know you're aware of the issue because of, uh, the county supervisor, Mr. Roger Pedo, has discussed the issue with you.
County surveyor?
Sorry?
County surveyor.
Yeah.
Yeah, talk to Roger about it.
Yeah, so my main question is why did you not ever respond to my multiple, multiple attempts to reach you?
Probably should have, quite honestly, um, meant to, didn't, but I will say this, it's a civil matter, um, the way I see it, and I don't wanna get involved in a civil matter.
Okay, so would it be okay if you just spent one minute of your time to reply to one of my emails and direct me in the direction to where I can go and take this from wherever I need to take it?
It's a civil matter.
It's a civil matter. All right, so maybe is there somebody that I can speak with?
You'll have to take it to court, sir.
So I need to take the board of supervisors to court?
No, you need to sue the people in the community that you think you're entitled to an easement to your property.
So you're familiar as well, sir, Mr. Axe?
Yeah, I believe we communicated.
Okay, great. So the reason why I'm standing here is not about the dispute with my neighbors, it's about the parcel map, when it was created, also known as the Bowman parcel map. Uh, it was created with the specific intention for Tony Lane to provide my property access. The road goes right onto my parcel, I found the two monuments right where the road goes on to my parcel. Without a doubt, this is supposed to be a county road, and the board of supervisors can't accept this county road without having to maintain the road, which means the dedication can be there, it's a public road, it's already been used as a public road. So with the county accepting that, it resolves the entire dispute, there's nothing to dispute anymore.
Well, your neighbors have a dispute.
I'm gonna jump in, we, they're not allowed to have discussion back and forth on, on this part of the agenda. If, if you want to ask them to add it to a future agenda, if you wanna ask them to meet, you can do that, but they, there's no back and forth.
So that was my point of reaching out to Mistro.
I understand, but that's not what you do at this point.
Okay, so if I could have just received the direction of like, hey, you wanna get on a meeting? You wanna get, you know, on the agenda, that would be great, you know?
Well, he's, he's the one that approves it to go on the agenda.
Right.
That's the chair.
And so I just need a response?
Uh, my response is, you know, I can talk to you, but it's a civil matter. And many times, well, I may go into details, but we can talk about it, but it's a civil matter.
Okay, so the civil matter is the dispute, correct?
Uh huh.
Not the board looking over the decision to accept it as a public road, that's a separate issue.
So here, here's my advice, you wanna ask the board to accept the road, send a letter, the board of supervisors, asking him.
Already done.
Okay, well then.
But there's no response?
Okay, well, that, that's a response.
That's a response?
No res-.
That's how, that's how the public is treated?
I think you can read into the.
Here in this county, the board doesn't respond.
Is not intending to, um, accept the road.
Counsel, are you speaking on his behalf?
If no one is, if no supervisor is asking that to be put on the agenda, then that's the direction.
Wow, all right, let my counsel know then.
Yep, well, thank you. Any other members of public?
Good morning, Board, um, Rachel Vila, Public Works Director. I'm here to give an update on the, um, bridge project that's going on, Willow Creek Bridge, crossing, uh, Carbondale, uh, Carbondale Road, crossing over that bridge, uh, near Forest Home Road. That project began earlier this summer and, um, has been progressing, but pretty much at a slow rate. And we're at a point where we have to, um, suspend operations because the, um, the work that's next to be completed will not be completed in time before we have to be out of the stream bed as per, um, State Water Board permit rules. Um, the, the, um, technical term for that is the suspension of controlling operations. In other words, the next logical phase of the project cannot move forward because of limitations with our permit. And so, um, that project will be suspended, um, which means that there's, uh, no, no crossing there, and it'll be that way through the winter. And, um, the controlling operations, so to speak, will begin in earnest on June first of next year. There may be other work that the contractor may do that's not involved with the, the stream bed, but that's, um, the major part of the work won't start again until June first. So, um, you know, it's unfortunate, the, I would say, you ask, probably ask, why are we in this situation? Uh, I think, uh, but no, honestly, I think the, we have a, we have a contractor who's putting forth good effort, but is a bit inexperienced in this type and size of project, and I just got, the schedule got out of, out of control a little bit for him. And so we had a, come to a point here in the last couple of weeks, say, you know, you can't, if you're gonna start, you have to be finished by the end of October or the middle of November at the very latest, and there is no way he could finish this next phase in doing that. So I just wanted to let the board know that, um, there is a detour in place around there, and given its location, there, there's not a lot of traffic, and the detour there is, is a, is a, um, you know, you go one way or the other, six, one half dozen the other, so it's, it's not a real major impact. The part of the road that's closed, there are no residences along there, there's a couple of ranchers that need access to their fields, which isn't the problem. Um, but I just wanted to provide the board with an update of that since it's a project that's been ongoing, and unfortunately, uh, we're off to spend those operations. Um, there should be, I mean, and so the contractor will have to monitor the site throughout the winter for, um, stormwater issues, um, as well as to make sure the traffic control, um, uh, facilities are intact and, and functional. So there is a cost to the contractor, which is on his dime to maintain this site over the winter.
Yeah, I'm sure they're not real happy about that neither.
No.
And it's, it's no fault of yours, Richard, I mean, you hired a contractor, um, it is what it is. And the good news is really, it's a pretty, there's, there's a lot of ways around there, it doesn't really impact many people, much if at all.
Right.
What is, uh, the estimated time for this next phase to get it done?
The contractor has approximately, I'm gonna say approximately because I don't have the exact number, but approximately two months left on his contract to complete the work. And if it wasn't for the limitation of having to get out of the stream bed by the end of October, we feel he'd be able to complete the work, but there's this, this deadline that has been known all along. And, um, as, as the summer wore on, our construction manager and such, um, was trying to, all right, you know, this deadline's coming up, you, you know, we need to have a revised schedule, um, there's supposed to be an expedited schedule provided and such, but it is what it is, and, um, we're at, at this point.
And what you said, even by the middle of November, they wouldn't be done?
Correct.
Yeah, that's enough.
And that's getting a two-week extension from the, the, the water board on the, for the permit.
Did they give you any kind of timeline when they thought they could be out of the stream bed?
It would probably take to the end of November.
Yeah, that's probably, you might get lucky and you might not.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, the permit is between the water board and the county. So, um, even though if there, if we violated the permit, we could pin that on the contractor, that just, it, it just doesn't put us in good standings with the water board. So, you know, even though financially there may not be a risk for us, you know, it's just, it's not good business.
And from what you said, it, it's not like you just go in there overnight and pull stuff out, it probably take, you gotta have to probably get your stormwater prevention in place and pull up, pull up the false work or whatever they have out of there?
Correct, I mean, the, the next phase is to put the, the center pier in on the bridge structure, and then all, put in all the false work for the, for the, uh, forming of the deck. And, um, and then that would have to be completed, and all that form work and false work would have to be pulled out. Um, and that's just not enough time for that to happen, so.
When did we start this project?
It started, um, in, in early June.
Okay, so it started, okay. And then what's the total conception time, you know, when did we come about putting this whole project together?
This project's been in the hopper for long before I got here.
Right.
These things start five, ten years ago, and these are, um, it's through their federal high, uh, bridge improvement program. Uh, we have federal funds for doing this project, uh, and that's what's, again, that's what's funding it. But there's a lot of, a lot of steps and hoops when you get federally funded.
So they're not gonna, you know, those contractors aren't gonna try to come back with a amendment to, to increase costs?
No.
No, I don't think so.
No.
If they do, we'll put him out of performance, and then we'll give you, send in the bail.
I don't know, uh, so I'll be putting out a, a notice, we always notice all the, um, emergency services, anyone who uses the road, of road closure, I'll, um, but I'll notice modifying that closure to extend that time.
You don't happen to know what they spent on all the, I don't know what you call it, the, the critter fencing down there? Is there any way to find out what that cost was as far as that contract? I'd be curious, it's, it's kind of ridiculous.
I, I, I don't have that number off the top of my head, I mean, let's certainly figure that out. But yeah, there's, there's certain environmental controls in place, um, to keep critters out, and there's ongoing monitoring for various species and what have you, so.
I was talking to my man, he said month, I mean, daily, every, every morning they come out and they check, make sure there's no holes in the fence from a squirrel, there's no holes eaten through the fence by a squirrel or a mouse. It's pretty silly, I mean, the, the point I'm making is, our road dollars are gone for nefarious purposes, with nefarious outcomes, and I, oh, I'd wonder, but once you put the fencing up, how do the critters get out? Maybe, maybe condemned to death inside the fencing, but anyway, um, any questions?
Okay.
All right, thank you, Richard. Any other members of the public? CNN. Yeah. Those zoomers, Jennifer? Okay. Well, at this point, we're looking for approval.
I'll move to approve the agenda as is, there are an item that needs to be added to it off of.
Yeah, I, I think we'll do a consent, um, no add it on to regular agenda, then that'd be probably better, Greg?
Well, either, you either do it here, or you do it at the con, at the next item.
I can do it to consent.
We wanna do it. We have some addendums.
Yeah, um. I think we'll, I think we'll do it at the consent, we'll just change, to approve the agenda for approval.
So, uh, are we, we're gonna add that item, or?
You know, yeah, go ahead and add it, um, it'd be, an item coming off consent agenda, addendums, one of the addendums would be item one A, and we'll probably put that down on the regular agenda, item four G.
All right, I'll move to approve the agenda with that addition.
Motion by Axe, my crew, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It carries unanimous. Uh, move down to approval item of consent agenda, we have two addendums. Oh, for the record, also on the regular agenda, that item one A was Amher County Airport, approval of a hangar ground lease, number one fifty-five, agree with this, Dave, Dave Tilden, Richards.
To approve consent agenda with the, those two items added.
Item one B, um, general services, and one C, ACE's waiter services. Motion by Forster, wait for a second.
Second.
Second by Axe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That carries unanimous. Moving down to, um, regular agenda, item four A is First Five, presentation by Nina Machado. And this is in recognition of twenty-five years of service to children and families in Amher County.
Good morning, nice to see everyone.
Good morning.
Um, so yes, I am here to, just to give, provide you an update, it is, um, twenty-five years, First Five is celebrating our twenty-fifth anniversary. Um, we've grown a lot over the years, we've, um, learned a lot over the years, and we've provided a lot of services to children and families. Um, wanted to give a special thank, uh, shout out to Supervisor Forster. He's been with us since, um, almost the beginning, and has been, um, a tremendous champion for children and families in the county, so, thank you. Actually, our Dad and Me program is a result of his question to me, so what are we doing for dads? And I thought, ah, yeah, yeah, we got it covered. And I looked at it and thought, you know, we really don't, so we now have a Dad and Me program, um, which we do every other month. And, um, that bottom picture, I gave you some pictures, bottom, middle picture, one of our most recent that we did on water safety, and, um, had a great turnout. Some of the other things I just wanted to share, on, in the picture that I gave you, the top, um, left is a music and movement grant that we participated in with Amador Arts. We're very appreciative of all the partnerships throughout the years. Um, the top middle picture is actually, um, Messy Mornings, which is a new playgroup that we offer to children and families. It's Fridays, Friday mornings, unstructured play for children, but we always have a topic for learning. So we know that ninety percent of brain development occurs before the age of five, which is why First Five came about, and, um, the child in the middle is learning gravity. So, um, with pulleys and other things that we're doing throughout the day, there, um, there are actually lessons to the, the play that they're doing. We really appreciate our, um, state fire safety, uh, folks who come, have been coming every year to, um, teach the children about, um, fire safety, just let them become familiar with law enforcement, fire folks, so that they're not scary, so that they are, know, understand that they are helpful. The next picture with the child in the book, I just wanted to put that, um, Imagination Library, we've been sponsoring in Amher County for fifteen years now, fifteenth anniversary with that. And we are currently serving over a thousand children in the county. So my last number, I think, was a thousand forty-one children are receiving a free book in the mail every month, and receive that, can receive that from birth until they turn five. And that's the program Dolly Parton started, um, we adopted it early in Amher. I think Amher and Mendocino were the first to do that, and, um, it's grown throughout the years. So to give you an idea, that's seventy percent of the age-eligible children in the county that are participating. Nothing that First Five does is income-based, anyone can participate. And I think that's the, um, the gift with First Five, so we have people from all walks of life, grandparents, we have childcare providers, family, friend, and neighbor caregivers, all coming together at our events, whether they're the three playgroups throughout the county. I own Plymouth and Jackson, trying to get services to families without them always having to come to Jackson. We just tried one, um, last night in Fiddletown, didn't have any takers, so we'll regroup and see, um, figure out with the community, maybe what schedule might work best for them, so that families, we know it's expensive right now to travel, um, so families, you know, don't have the means always to make it to, um, to Jackson. We have, um, Mom Me Times, which is an evening event that we started, and we actually have a clinician who comes in and helps facilitate a conversation. The topics are actually provided to us by families. So we've done presentations on everything from stretching your grocery, grocery budget to, um, time management to child development. So it's whatever is of interest to the group that's coming. Um, we have typically fif, around fifteen folks who participate. Messy Mornings is our highest participation rate, probably between twenty-five and forty children come every week, and their caregivers stay with them. Um, we open our building up, we rent the building next to the CHP from the Jackson Rancheria. It is a fabulous location for us, we're able to provide a lot of services there, which is centrally located, our welcome baby visits, the playgroups, um, but we also, because we have a large meeting room, can accommodate meetings for NAMI, um, we have the school districts, um, special education department is using it for training right now. We have, um, go back to my list, the Resource Connection, has a little office kiosk in our building so that families don't have to drive to McCollum Hill to receive information regarding, um, childcare, they can meet right there in, um, in our office. We, um, have the Native American Round Tables that have been re, um, occurring on a regular basis, and, um, behavioral health, I mean, it, it has been used widely by the community, so it's proven to be a great resource, a great community hub. Child Welfare is currently using it for visits when families, um, have children in the foster care program, and then the, the families can come together and do supervised visits, and those are occurring, um, not supervised by us, but by other entities, but they utilize our space for that. So it, um, has grown over the years, we have appreciated all of the partnership with the organizations and agencies in the county to make it happen, we couldn't do it by ourselves, and you're one of them. Um, so we also oversee the Child Abuse Prevention Council, they sit under our umbrella because the majority of children in child welfare system are, um, typically three and under. So just thank you for celebrating with us, and have any questions?
No.
Suggestions, we're always open to suggestions.
I just think you've always done a very good job over the years.
Thank you.
Just like to say it's a great program, and, uh, I think everything that, uh, you guys do over there is, is, has been good when I've attended meetings.
Thank you, we, we appreciate you filling in too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thanks for everything else you do.
Thank you.
I know you do a lot more than First Five's.
No, it's a good county.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of public like to comment on that item? CNN, we're moving on to item four B, this discussion of possible action regarding annual compliance review, use permit conditions of approval for the Hoover hideout. The annual review was included in Board's two thousand twenty-three approval to project zone change and use permit for an event venue, it's APN zero-two-six, day zero-six-zero, day zero-one-eight.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Eddie with the planning department. Uh, as you, as you mentioned, your, the board's approval of the use permit for the hideout last summer uh, included, um, fifty conditions of approval, I know if you look at the list of conditions, it says fifty-one, that's because there's no number twenty-one, so apologize for that confusion. Uh, and, and included with your approval then was a, um, uh, included with that motion was the direction of staff to report back to you annually on, uh, compliance of those conditions, so that's what today's, uh, re, report is to, is to, um, um, re, report on. Of those fifty conditions, um, the compliance review prepared by, prepared by staff indicates that thirty-seven of those conditions are in compliance with about thirteen of them that still need to be satisfied. Um, I can go through the list that are in the staff report of the ones that are, are not in compliance, if, if you want, or if you wanna take, um, you know, comments from the, from the applicant because they did prepare a response and submitted that, uh, to you, uh, last week. Um, I, I think members of the public will also like to comment.
I'd like to hear from, um, Hoover's, it, it sounds like they feel they've satisfied more of those requirements, but probably not communicated directly like with environmental health, so.
Right, and it's, as with all of these, it's incumbent upon the, the applicant or the project proponent to make staff aware that those conditions have, have been satisfied. Um, of the three of those that, that, that they responded to that were related to planning, um, I, I, I know that those, those three would be ongoing and still need additional information. I, I haven't had an opportunity to discuss with AFPD or Environmental Health whether or not those have been satisfied based on the response, or if they've had time to evaluate that.
Okay, well, thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Any more questions? No, what about zoomers?
Well, do we have a list of the ones that are not in compliance, or?
Yeah, we do, um, actually now, Mr. Hoover?
Morning.
Morning.
Josh Hoover with the hideout. Um, to give you a quick summary, or if you guys have questions that you'd like to address specifically, I don't know if you wanna go through all thirteen items?
Go through the summary, whatever you wanna do.
Um, in general, as you guys know, we only get a few months, five months out of the year to work up there. We do have guests up there constantly, um, so some of the items are ongoing, some of the items we are working on. There are a number of items that we did get, did get done this year, and we feel like we made pretty good progress in getting items like the septic systems put in, the leach fields dug and installed, um, we've taken pictures, we've submitted them to our design team, we've been doing items like the water testing of the lake and our water system, they've been submitted, um, as scheduled to the water agency. We thought those were getting submitted to environmental health, but it turns out they're most likely not being submitted into environmental health. So we submitted those with our responses last week, um, on some of these items for you guys to take a look at. To date, nothing has come up as a red flag on the water systems that we know of. Um, there are some items like Caltrans, where we're working with our design team, our engineers, we're in discussions with Caltrans in the encroachment permit, trying to get that worked out. Um, so we're, we're kinda waiting on that back and forth right now. I know the signage for the highway hasn't been done yet, because again, we're kinda, we're waiting on Caltrans direction on what and where they're gonna allow us to do signage out there.
Caltrans is normally pretty good at giving direction.
It was pretty generalized, we wanted something more stationary for the summer, but removable for the winter snow loads. Um, there- Their original comment was to put up basically something that's just constantly removable. And so I'm trying, we're trying to get something a little bit better there, so it's easier for the guests coming and going to see it. So we're working through those right now with them. So items like that, that are, that we can do through the winter, we're going to focus on this winter. The emergency business plan, or the hazmat plan, the emergency contingency plan. Items that are more paperwork-oriented, that we can wait for winter time when we can't do work on site, is our plan to sit down with Fire Department and other agencies to work out those details this winter and get those plans drafted and ready by June of next year.
Well, have you turned in documentation needed by Environmental Health?
On.
Last week you did that, you said?
We sent, we sent in a response to all the items that they had, the thirteen items. We wrote up a response for every item on there. Some of the items, for instance, food service, one of their comments was that we may need to get a permit for food service on our property. However, we don't provide the food. We only provide the property. So as far as getting like a food service permit, we're not sure that we actually need one. So items like that, we will, that's our goal this winter, we'll sit down with everybody, go through items like that, that if they're actually needed or not. The fire code deviation will work out this winter.
You ever got a question like item thirty-two?
One sec.
It says, you said you've done it all. Why haven't you had them come out and sign it off?
So we've been submitting.
Here it is, we've done it.
Correct. We've been submitting our documentation to our design team. We've been taking pictures along the way, but we did not have them up there to sign off in person.
I don't see any reason why you can't do that.
We can, absolutely can.
I mean, why you didn't do it? I mean, here's the thing, it's a little bit of a contentious issue. We're trying to work with you. We need you to work with us.
Absolutely.
And just saying, hey, we've done all that, that's not good enough.
Understood.
We want to, when you come out, get a look at it, sign it off. There it is, done.
Yep. Yeah, and part of it, the three hundred foot in the management area, we're actually under, we're finishing up right now. We're digging the leach field and installing, so that one is getting wrapped up, so we can have you guys out to, I schedule an appointment for them to come out and sign off on in person.
What about number nine, the property owner indemnification?
Number nine, we were going to discuss that one with our lawyer this winter and get something drafted up that we can submit to all property owners.
You said this winter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we were going to work on that one over the winter, when we're not in the mountains, so that we can sit down with them in person and get.
Because to be quite honest, I'm not real happy. There's a lot of things here, like something like that, that should be done, should have been done. We've asked for it. It's not, it's not like you have insurmountable physical thing, you have to try to, you know, go through a pile of green, granite rocks, and you can't. It's something, you just got to go ahead and write up a, write up a letter, say, hey, here's indemnification to you, Mr. Munn, or whoever's ground you're going through.
Right. And to Mr. Munn, I believe we already do that.
What's that?
To Mr. Munn, we already do that. To the other property owners, I don't believe we do it this time.
You've given him a letter indemnification?
I believe we're, he's written into our insurance as additionally insured, or covered by, I double check on that.
Yeah, that, but that's also not an indemnification, that's an additionally insured, which is good. But that's not a letter saying, hey.
Okay.
A little bit of difference.
Understood.
Okay. I guess, continue if you could.
Well, if there's other specific comments that you guys are.
Well, I think, I'm not going to be on the board after the end of this year, but I have to agree with Supervisor Onetto on one thing. I don't think you're being, you're seeing the urgency in this. We've given you plenty of time, we're trying to work with you. We look at it as a valuable business. We need you to work with us. And I think the board should set another meeting for you to attend, and make it like April or something like that, so we can see that you're making sufficient progress for us to keep working with you.
Right.
And get to fruition on this.
Absolutely. No, and, you know, like they said, we have fifty items, thirty-seven of them are satisfied. We have thirteen remaining. We are planning on working through those.
There's thirteen remaining, a lot of them are environmental health, which is pretty important. I realize you're working on it, but you need to have some expediency on it and try and get, get those results.
Schedule an appointment with Environmental Health to sit down, and some of those may be signed off at, you know, instantly.
Josh, on item eight, that fire, unsure what the fire code deviation is needed or required, didn't Chief Withrow and his staff come up this summer and did a walk around and talked about the road improvements? He was giving me kind of a report on that.
Yeah, so Fire Department.
Is that the deviation you're talking about?
The specific deviation, I'm unsure of what the deviation is. They came up, they did an inspection, they brought an engine with them, they got it up in over the hill, they walked around the entire property, they checked all our fire extinguishers, smoke alarms, our property, they went through everywhere. As far as what the actual deviation requirements are, I guess, and the permit for that, I'm a little unsure of, was what my comment referred to there. But also down with Fire.
That's the thing we're kind of talking about right now, is getting that coordination going now.
Right.
You know, get this information done, get it checked off, get it, you know, work together.
Absolutely.
And the biggest thing that we're looking at is that we don't want you to, you know, put anybody in harm's way. You know, we want to make sure we're doing everything correctly, too.
Hundred percent.
So please, you know, let's get this coordination going, because this is, you know, we're trying to get you, keep your business open. We don't want to shut it down.
Right. I appreciate that.
And it's one of those things, we need to get this coordination going, and you've got to take the first step.
Hundred percent. And so that's why my comment is by Ju-, you know, typically, we're not open in the winter, we don't have guests there. All our guests are gone this year, for the rest of the year. We're working on our closing up, winterizing, which is why we, in the comments, it says June of twenty-five, meaning that before any guests come back, these items, our hope is to have all items satisfied.
Please, please.
Sooner the better, of course, but I put June of twenty-five in respect to guests being on site.
But it, but it's any of these stuff that we can get done now, before, you know, while you're closing up, getting all this information coordinated.
Right.
I mean, I notice some still hurdles you have to run over, you know, Caltrans being probably your biggest one, but it's, it's still, you know, trying to get all this information coordinated.
Correct.
Thank you.
And on that comment, I am trying to get Calfire out there the end of this month as well, just to do an additional walk with us, so that they can familiarize themselves with our property, give us any input as a local first responder to what we can do to make it easier for everybody.
Are there two responders, would it be Calfire and Amador Fire Protection District?
We, we like to have both of them on our side, meaning that, I report to Amador Fire, they do our annual inspections, but Calfire is our closest, one of our closest neighbors up there. And if there's an emergency, who's going to show up? I'm not sure.
Calfire for more due drawup?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so we like, we want to make sure that they're very familiar with our property.
When the Caldo Fire happened, you just shut down operations, correct?
Correct. When they shut down the highway, we actually didn't have, we had contacted guests right before, knowing that they were going to shut down the highway probably sometime that week. We had canceled the groups that were supposed to be coming in. We were off-site at the time, when I got word that they were actually going to shut down the highway that day. And so we went up, buttoned up the property, what we could do, and then we were out of there during the Caldo Fire as well. So when they, when they shut down the highway, we didn't have anybody on the property to evacuate.
So Josh, by June of next year, do you plan on having all of these thirteen ones or ten that weren't in compliance to be checked off the list?
That would be my goal. If there's any items that require, and we'll talk to them if they want to come up and try to do an inspection prior to winter, like Environmental Health, try to get them up there, so that if we need to do things throughout the winter, if it requires a permit. But things such as fire code deviation, property owner indemnification, indemnification, items with Caltrans, the business plans, the hazardous material business plans, the emergency contingency plans, those items should easily be rectified this winter.
Those are primarily like documents?
Correct. Emergency evacuation plans, the highway encroachment, items like that, I want to say yes, but I just can't guarantee based on permits, Caltrans, the back and forth that may be required on items like that. But our goal is to, one hundred percent, get this wrapped up.
Okay, and Mr. Munn will be taken care of by then?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly what that entails.
Well, just the indemnification of them?
Yes.
Okay.
The food service might be one that you're still arguing about, because you don't think you need it.
Well, the hood, the hoods were, working with some design professionals to help us design what we can do where. The hard part for us is different buildings require different hoods, meaning that in the log cabin, we don't necessarily want to drill an exterior vent through our logs to put in a hood that vents to the outside. Other buildings, it may be easier to do and pop out a vent on the outside. We're just trying to make sure that we get the correct designated hoods for the areas that we need them in.
You know, Josh, what might give us a little more confidence up here is mid-winter, send us an email or to Chuck to say, I finished number eight, or.
Absolutely.
The stuff that you could work on in the winter.
Yeah.
That'd be helpful.
No, and my, our plan is to sit down with Fire, you know, in, I would initially say mid-November, since I'm wrapping up, closing up for the winter right now, sit down with Fire, start working through the contingency plans, the business plans that they're asking for. Because us being where we're at, as you guys know, our emergency contingency plans are going to be much different than something in the county, where it's local here. We're in the middle of the woods, so we want to make sure that we build it to fit our circumstances, not everybody's circumstances. So we're, I want to sit down with Fire, make sure that we're all on the same page with exactly how and the way that we do the, but that is my plan, sit down with Fire, sit down with Ashley or the chief, and make sure that they're satisfied before we put it into action.
On item number six, it says the Fire Department has approved this for the time being, you're saying Amador Fire Protection District is okay with that, then?
Correct.
You have a letter from them, or what?
I probably have an email format somewhere that says that the signage that basically we don't allow grease cooking inside the buildings is acceptable.
Okay.
Knowing that we're working towards hood vents. We provide barbecues outside for them to utilize, if they're going to do anything such as bacon.
Mr. Beatty?
If I could, condition six is kind of multi-layered, so the issue related to the hood system and them installing signs, inspecting people not to use grease-laden va-, you know, food that's going to cause grease-laden vapors, satisfies that part of the condition. I think the part that we were concerned about, Environmental Health was concerned about, is the host facilities permit, that would still be outstanding.
I think they said they used outside vendors.
It would be related to caterers, exactly.
Pardon?
It is related to caterers and outside food vendors.
So wouldn't that be the caterers' problem, not their problem?
It's, it's because they hosted, it becomes, it becomes their problem to have the food, the host facilities permit. Caterers still have to have their food safe permits from Jever County, they operate out of, but as a host, they have to have the host facilities permit. So I don't think it's difficult to get, it's just a matter of complying with.
But that is, you know, it means that, you know, telling, they're telling us that they're not going to be storing any food, they're not going to do anything else, is that what you're implying?
That's Mr. Meyer to elaborate.
Okay.
Hello, Scott Meyer, Director of Environmental Health. Yeah, I'd like to step in and answer that question. A host facility is required if they're going to do catering. The host facility is actually refrigerators, hot heating units that would be provided for the caterers to use in the facility.
But if they, if they don't provide that, if that's something that they don't?
If they don't allow catering at the, at the.
No, they have a caterer, truck comes in, truck parks out in the meadow.
Self-contained.
Self-contained, brought all their food with them.
Oh, I see. Now, that's going to be easier to handle, if they still have, if they needed storage, they'd have it at the host facility, but a lot of caterers come up with food to do the preparation on site.
Right.
Like an open air, like a barbecue or something like that, so.
But there, there are trailers or trucks who have that refrigerator on there. And then, and as far as I've known, I've talked to Mr. Hoover, they weren't providing any food storage.
Okay.
On, onsite, except for guests bringing their own food that are staying there.
If it was only mobile food facilities like you're describing, then they wouldn't need a host facility. Catering is a little different. Catering is when you have a, you have an actual commercial kitchen, a commissary is what we call it.
Right.
You operate out of there, and then you bring the food to the event, and it can go, you know, two hours, four hours. And the reason for refrigeration is to keep everything at proper temperature, and heating units at hot holding temperature. If you're bringing in mobile food facilities, that's a different animal.
What we need to know is what's going to happen, and we need to, in writing, and we need you to come down and meet with Scott, so that we can get that done, rather than the supervisors say what, what you're being told, what they want to do, we need to get it laid out.
That really is the case. We need to meet regarding the host facility, we need to meet regarding the water permit. It's not a public water system, but it still requires a state small water system permit through our office. And there is a little problem, I mean, in a, in a perfect world, I would have liked to have been there for the septic installs and the septic repair to do construction inspections. That was noted on thirty-one and on thirty-two to bring Environmental Health up for construction inspections, and it didn't happen. Now there's photos, and I understand a, a design consultant, who's that?
Tom Hoover with the hideout. When we started this process regarding the septic, we have a permit to install certain septic, we also had direction to add additional septic to existing. Our design engineer was Jess Shaw, along with Mike Israel, are the ones that came on-site and designed the system. We, we were issued the permit, I think, in January twenty-three or somewhere in there, which is a little hard to, difficult to dig in January, but, so we've been working on, the instructions I've got, and this goes to Mr. Onetto's question, is, we were told at that time, early on, this is actually before you took over the department, was that Jess Shaw would be our review engineer. We would send him the information, he would then submit that to the county Environmental Health, which is what we've been doing along as we finished, as we built, that we've been taking pictures and sending them to him. Because that was our direction at the time. The department has changed some, but that's how we've been carrying it forth, is because that's what was, we were told to do early on. How, because he's the design engineer, he's the one that designed it, they approved it, but he's the one that needed to look at whether we were doing it correctly. whether we were doing it correctly. We have no problem bringing them up, but that wasn't really our direction early on. We were supposed to go through Jess Shaw. Jess Shaw has actually relocated, so we're having to send things to him, you know, email, and then he was going to get ahold.
Get a reply to that.
Um.
Go ahead. Thank you, Tom. Um, yeah, again, in the conditions, environmental health was supposed to be out and observing these inspections. Jesse Shaw, if there's still, um, communicating with Jesse and he's their consultant, he will eventually need to provide a final letter on all the changes and all the septic systems that were installed. And those photos to him, that's a great idea. But Jesse's not doing onsite inspections, you know, it's really falls under environmental health for that.
We're happy to work together. It's a little bit of making sure that we understand which is the proper direction. And right now we were just following what we were told. Last year, we had a really wet year, if you remember, we started about a month, month and a half late um, because we had six feet of snow in June. So we weren't able to do much more work than clear the ground later during the summer. This year we've spent, I've spent a considerable time installing and, and working on these systems. Um, as we have time, as my son said, we have guests most of the summer, so it's difficult to run chainsaws and backhoes while you have guests on the property, so, um, and we're happy to work with some of these, some of these things, we're not right, sure the, as the guides change or the direction changes a little bit. We're trying to get stuff done in the summer when we have time, which is very limited. So we're not looking to come down and, and have meetings because we have very limited time. We're trying to, you have a big list of it for us right now, and we're trying to get through that list with the time we have. So we prioritize what needs to be done in the summer when we can do it. And then if there's other times that we can do other things, then we try to, you know, move those to that time period. So we apologize that not everything has been worked on, but there's a limited staff and there's a limited time and certain things we just can't do in the winter up there, so.
How many, how many years are we going on now? So I, I think you've hurt our expectations and you got a new sheriff in town in environmental health. So I think you've got a pretty clear direction to get her done.
Yeah.
In the letter to, uh, adjoining properties which your customers traverse through, get, get that indemnification done. No reason you can't.
I, I do think we cover Mr. Munn with our insurance and, and our, we have a
That's your insurance.
We have a contract with him. We have a written document between us, um, so we
What's, what's a written contract? Does it indemnify him?
Yes, we're, we're, we're We made some changes on the road years ago and one of the conditions was that we would do that and provide him with insurance coverage and notification, and we do that each year. The other, the other landowners are some
Um, I think maybe, uh, we'd like to hear from Mr. Munn. Here they, thought I saw him back there.
Okay.
Um, at some point I'd like to hear from him as far as what's been provided to him and if he's and maybe talk to our county council and see if there's an indemnification that meets what we've requested. So I mean, if Mr. Munn, if you've got insurance and you've worked something out, Mr. Munn is happy as far as the indemnification, fine. Um, but we'll see, we'll see.
Well, that's, we're not aware of what we're, have to do with the other landowners. There's mostly absent and we don't see them. Um, so it's something new that we have to indemnify somebody that we have a deed to easement through their property, but now we have to indemnify him also. That was somewhat of a new element whether, in our position, we're not sure whether that was properly required or not. We see it's in there, but is it something that we require everybody that has a deed to easement through the property to, to provide them with indemnification is what the question would be.
Okay, Tom, if that's the case, bring that up, we'll hash it out, don't just ignore it.
I understand what you're saying, and I don't, and I apologize that we haven't gotten everything done. We've tried to be prioritize things.
So I mean, if you, if you, if you agree to something, the, the, before it gets done, you should say, hey, I have a problem, I don't think that's legal or correct. Okay, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
Um, don't bring it up last minute.
Well, you realize when we went through this permit process, it was a long process. And we were all tired of it. We ended up with fourteen pages of new conditions.
And some of the stuff you have, I, I don't, I don't like myself, I mean, this, this swimming pond, I mean, I don't know, do they test all the water in all the lakes all the time? And it depends where they test the water in the lakes, I mean, so it's
Well, and we've said among ourselves, we would think that there's a time we're going to have those future discussions on those items after we have a little history with it to see whether it's really relevant or necessary. But in the meantime, we're trying to get through this list. We appreciate your patience and we will definitely work on these items and get them finished this time. Caltrans, uh, you left the impression that they're very responsive. I'd have to say the opposite that, you know, some of these
Maybe I didn't word that right.
You know, our attorney, that last one he worked on took six years to get through a simple driveway change. Um, it just
I should have said they're very bureaucratic, so, yeah.
It takes time and we, we think that from the early indications, our driveway is very close to being adequate to what they're requiring for a commercial driveway. So the question is what other improvements need to be done? They're working that out. What they want is a stamped proposal from an engineer. And then they'll, they'll process that much quicker. And if you send in an application, then this is, basically this is what we want to do without an engineer. So we're trying to go in a, in a direction that we think is efficient, but still it's very slow and we could, the guarantee that we'll have that done by June means that we'd have to guarantee something that we, is out of our control, which is Caltrans.
Well, I would, I would like to see all of these, these conditions satisfied by the time you open in June with the exception of the encroachment and the outdoor advertising because you have to rely on Caltrans for that and we have no control over that.
We agree.
So.
Got all your policy to work on it.
Recommendation.
Can we plan to come back in for another update in April, May?
That's what I would recommend, and
Yeah.
Maybe by, um,
Oh, oh. Yeah.
By middle of April or something like that.
Or just an email to Chuck Beatty, he can report this for.
I, I would say relative to that, the Caltrans question, that their application needs to be complete because it sounds like you haven't submitted a complete application to Caltrans yet. Is that correct?
No, we're going to discussions with them, show that we can, when we submit it, it's completed and stamped.
Right, so that should be completed. The submission on your end is in your control.
At least have a, have the application submitted, okay? But that could take a long time to hear back from them.
Right, right, and, and that's out of their hands, but they need to have it.
In the effort to try to do it once and do it correct, we are, we have been in contact with the Caltrans engineers in our area and the personnel so that we, between us and our design team and them, we can hopefully only do this once and not drag it out as long as
You're talking about District Ten, right?
Correct.
So, you know, drive down to Stockton might be a good idea too, to, uh, light a fire under them.
Looking to it. Questions for?
Not right now, thank you.
Scott Meyer, Environmental Health again. Um, just had a few, uh, more points just to make. Uh, regarding the, um, the, the actual pong sampling, we have one other facility we do actually sample for bacteriological contaminants and, and it's on a, yeah, actually a monthly basis because we've had high levels of fecal contamination. Yeah, their analysis they turned in just last week, I, I looked at it and it looked good. Um, it was like, I think they were doing monthly, it appeared, or maybe every other month. And then I have one sample for water, I assume. It's poorly labeled, not really sure. But we can meet on that and that's going to require a meeting regarding what's required for a water system sampling, some bacteriological sample site plan. And it's going to need an inspection by our department. The hazmat business plan, um, that's going to be what kind of hazardous materials you have onsite. That's going to need an inspection and a permit by our office as well. Generated hazardous waste, that's going to need a permit and inspection by our office as well, any amount. Um, the food facility, again, that's going to need some construction for that host facility. If you're not going to have, you know, caterers that are operating out of a commissary and then bringing it to an event up there at the facility, um, you wouldn't need that kitchen. But it sounds like they're going to do a little bit of both. Catering to a catering event or a wedding or, and then maybe a truck would show up too. So the host facility would be required, we'd have to permit it and inspect it. So, there's a fair amount of things to do still for environmental health and, uh, yeah, some meetings together would be very helpful to spell everything out so they know where they're proceeding.
Because that's one of the problems I'm seeing right now. It looks like they're not talking to you much at all.
No, not at all.
And I, I think, and I think, uh, Mr. Hoover, I, I think you're, you, you have a background in administration. Um, you know what needs to be done. So my advice to you is you need to be talking to environmental health and help them help you. They're not there trying to hurt you, they're, there's just some stuff they need to get done and you need to work with them. So I mean, so long is kind of, you're, you're getting in that rope.
Do you think your inspection team could get up there for winter hits?
Uh, it'll be a little tricky. I'm kind of short-staffed. It would be me.
There's a little problem on both ends.
Right, I mean, I can do it. Thank you.
Just be a devil's head.
Mr. Munn?
Well, good morning. My name is John Munn.
Morning.
Um, I'm going to skip the background information that I put on my written comments because that would take time and you don't need that. Uh, my comments today are about Amador County Use Permit UP twenty and twenty, ten dash two. And I'm focusing on condition numbers forty-five and forty-seven, which are required to be met prior to activation of the use permit and the effect of non-activation. Use permit condition number forty-five states that the applicant must obtain, obtain and maintain a commercial encroachment permit from Caltrans consistent with the commercial use of the property prior to activation of the use permit. And to my knowledge, this encroachment permit has not been obtained. And in fact, as far as I know, a request for the encroachment permit has not been submitted, and I think you've beaten that to death here. Uh, this is noted as a deficiency in the staff report. But the commercial use has been documented and still continues. Condition number forty-seven states that a deviation subject to approval by the Amador Fire Protection District and by the Community Development Agency is required prior to activation of the use. The last I heard, no such deviation had been approved. Uh, but commercial uses were and are ongoing. This condition is not listed as a deficiency in the staff report. So either a deviation has been approved by the Amador Fire Protection District and the Community Development Agency without my knowledge, or this might be part of the deficiency listed for condition number eight. Um, if it's not identified as a deficiency, it is. Uh, if it's part of number eight, there's just no way to tell. But at a minimum, a deviation is needed to address and to provide mitigations for the two-mile dead-end roadway distance from Highway eighty-eight to the hideout, which is twice the distance allowed in Fire and Supply Safety Chapter fifteen thirty of the current county code. And this has nothing to do with the structures mentioned in the use permit. Now I made the board aware of both of these problems prior to approval of the use permit. And I have asked to be informed about required deviations so that I can decide whether or not I want to make an appeal to the Board of Supervisors within the time limits that are specified in Section fifteen thirty. So far, I've not been informed about the approval of any deviations. Finally, if the use permit has not been activated because its conditions have not been met and commercial zoning is not yet established and restrictions on commercial use under its existing R one A zoning should now be enforced. You have now allowed the development over more than ten years of a substantial business that relies on commercial operations in an area that was, and I think still is, zoned for residential use. I thought that zoning codes were supposed to prevent problems between neighbors, but this does require enforcement. Continued delay just makes the problems created by commercial use at the hideouts worse for you and for me. It is time to start bringing this situation into conformance with codes and other legal requirements. Now, a couple of things have come up today that, that I'll address. One, I am an indemnified. As a condition of the easement, Mr. Hoover is supposed to provide me with insurance and, uh, make me an additional assured under his policy. And in fact, I have that for the other, uh, landowners that use the road over my property. So I'm not particularly concerned about the indemnification. But I am concerned about the entry because Caltrans has turned me down for putting an entry off of Highway eighty-eight. And the reason is that when my grandfather sold that property to the state of California and they created the right-of-way, they made it a freeway except for a couple of entries that my grandfather reserved. Now, they've since changed the language. A freeway is now, uh, controlled access. But where Hoover's entry is, or the hideout entry is, is not one of the two spots that my grandfather had reserved. So they have a process called decertification where you have to conduct specified reviews. Uh, you have to put in a down payment for those because they're going to do them. And they, so they require the down payment so that they're reimbursed for the work. Uh, the entry or the crossing of the right-of-way has to be approved by the State Transportation Commission and that approval is not automatic, it's discretionary. And then the property, that property that the entry lies on is supposed to be purchased from the state. Then maybe they'll issue an encroachment permit. So you have an issue with activation requirement or an encroachment permit that can't be, um, given until they go through decertification. And neither the, the application for decertifications has been submitted nor an application which would get turned down by Caltrans for an encroachment permit. As far as the, um, two-mile limit goes, or the two-mile distance goes, that's twice the allowed distance of fifteen thirty. And I just can't imagine what kind of mitigation you would do and keep that as a winding gravel surface road having to go through granite outcrops and, um, mitigate doubling the distance. It, I just don't know. So you've created those conditions and really it's up to you to decide whether or not, I guess, they're going to get enforced. So I will leave it at that and thank you for your time. And if you had any questions, I could answer them now or I'll stick around for a little while if others come up.
Yeah, I guess one question I, I have, you said you have two accesses. Yeah, I guess one question I, I have, you said you have two accesses now.
Actually, I have three.
Okay.
Three, act, three points of access that it's deeded, it's in the deed between my grandfather and Caltrans, well, now Caltrans, then the state of California. But I've had that entryway surveyed, its location, to make sure it was in the right place. At the time, I didn't know about this other problem. Uh, and the survey says, yeah, it's where the map shows it. And where the map shows it is state property.
Thank you. I, I will say, um, I had missed that. I did see an AFPD were number six. They're happy with your sign as far as, uh, grill. Um, you know, a question I'd, I'd have maybe for Greg. It wasn't a condition of the use permit, but the highway encroachment, i- is that really the county's business or is that between them and Caltrans?
Well, it's a condition of the use permit, so, um, it's, I, I think it's an appropriate condition to make sure that the use that we're permitting has a, a legal encroachment onto a state highway. It's consistent with other conditions. We've put on other projects that have that kind of an issue.
Okay, well, maybe, I might talk to you later about that somewhere. I, I just wondered about that. It's not, it's not like it's a subdivision or something along that line.
No, but it is a, a commercial business essentially needing an encroachment.
On the state highway?
On the state highway.
Yeah. I think that's something Caltrans could require if they, if they wanted.
Well, whatever Caltrans does or doesn't require is up to Caltrans. But we want them to have a legal encroachment for the use. So whatever Caltrans says they need to be legal is up to Caltrans. Our condition really is that they have a legal, essentially a legal encroachment.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of public?
I'd like the board to consider, the three board members who are still gonna be here, to consider having the Hoovers come in and give a report on their progress sometime in the spring. Whether that be April fifteenth, May first, something like that.
Yeah, I think it'd be, it'd be good.
So you three pick a date.
I mean, I, I'd say sometime early spring. Doesn't have to be a hu- a hard date, but we'll probably come up with one.
One of the April meetings. Let them choose.
Yeah.
It also gives you time in case there's, you know, snow problems before opening.
That'd be all right with you gentlemen? Second, fourth, doozies.
I don't care which one it is.
No.
Sometime, one of the board meetings in April. And I think, um, you know, the one reason we have environmental health is they come out and they're supposed to inspect items when you do them, when you're doing them. Um, if they're a little short-staffed, that could be a problem. Um, but I, I would say work with them more and it's, it's gonna do your case well. Um, they, they say, hey, you haven't talked to them at all. And as part of conditions, it does not reflect good on you folks.
Gosh, I forgot one thing. You said you sent pictures to Jesse Shaw? Do you have pic, do you have those pictures like in your phone? You could ship them to Scott? Or some collection of them, get him kind of up to date?
Just speaking like you and mine.
All right. That just came to me. Sorry.
Nope, you're good. Sorry about that. Uh, yes. Tom's been taking pictures of everything throughout the progress. He's been the one digging them. He's been the one installing everything. So he's got all the photos on his phone. We can forward them to Environmental Health.
Wouldn't that help you, Scott, to kinda get you caught up a little bit to where they're at?
We'll get started with that and try to schedule a meeting.
There you go.
If he's available in the next two or three weeks before snow falls, we'd love to have him up there.
That would really help, sure.
Okay, good.
And then we can meet, discuss.
I will say, I, I do struggle with this a little bit. Um, from, uh, like last year sometime, year before, last week, took a ride in the X-Pine Silver Lake where they had Plaza Trading Post and there's a pile of rocks on top of the hill with no permits. That was going back to eighteen forties probably. So I feel your pain on that, on that aspect a little bit. Because there is a lot of reg, there is a lot of boxes you gotta check, but.
We're trying to check them all for you.
Okay.
I'd make Scott your best friend.
That's probably pretty good advice.
Yeah, very good.
Any other members of public? I think we probably make sure everybody has direction here. Yeah. Moving on, uh, next item is item four C. This is, uh, General Service Administration. And this is a beneficiary of Gretchen Kingsbury Trust. Um, the Kingsbury Trust is, uh, is looking to donate ten thousand dollars to, um, animal shelter, which is.
Good, good, good. Morning. Evan Jacobs, Director of Animal Control. How are you guys? Um, yeah, Gretchen Kingsbury was a volunteer at the shelter for a little over fifteen years, um, back in the early, or excuse me, late nineteen nineties. So some of my staff actually knew her quite well. Um, she had passed beginning of this year. Her trust left Animal Control a ten thousand dollar, um, donation to keep doing what we're doing. So I'm here, um, notifying you all and asking you any questions you may have.
And you're gonna send a letter? Is that how it works?
Yes, we will send a, a letter as the previous.
To the estate or?
Yes, uh, the, the daughter was the one we've been in contact. So we will make sure that she gets a letter and then she can send it to the family.
Is her daughter the one that submitted the, the write?
Yes.
I thought it was really heartfelt, um, tribute to her mother.
I covered about half of it.
Yes, I heard she did. Uh, was quite the well-known person in the county on a multitude of levels.
Yeah, I know she was a school system. I remember when I was a little kid, she was there. So going back a ways.
She was. Went to school with both of her daughters too. So anyway, we like to publicly recognize her for their, her, her donations.
Yeah, it's, um.
Extremely nice.
It really is. It is nice. I know it's, people in the community of Amherst County, they, they really support, uh, animal shelter a lot. I mean, it's, it's amazing how many people volunteer and walk dogs and just do, do a lot of work up there. It's really helpful.
Oh, extremely. We, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without the volunteers. That's for sure.
I'm sure my dog and cat would be quite supportive of the, the whole endeavor. And as I get older, I think, you know, you should think you own animals. And I come to the point that I think maybe those animals own us. We just don't know it. No zoomers? Looking for action? Okay, motion by Cruz. Second, may. President Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Chair is unanimous.
Thank you.
That was a quick.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. How about we take a break at this time and we'll come back, um, probably about, oh, let's make it ten thirty-five.
This time we're going to a public hearing scheduled for 10:30. First item we'll take is item 5A, finding departments request for zone change from R1A, single-family residential to Ag exclusive. Good to go.
Good morning, this is Krista from the planning department. So this is an application for a new Williamson Act contract and that includes a zone change from the existing zoning of single-family residential and Ag to the county's Ag exclusive zoning district. And then the zoning regulations for the Ag district become the limitations of the contract. And then I did want to say so this is located north of Jackson Gate Road between the city limits of Jackson and Depot Road. And currently the proposed property being added to the preserve would be three separate APNs totaling 174.25 acres. And I know that we have been processing these as exempt per SEQA with limitations of the Ag district being incorporated into the contract. So it would be any new uses introduced through the change to the Ag district, any increase in the byright uses, those would just be separately called out within the contract as requiring a conditional use permit to avoid any SEQA impacts that way. This was reviewed by the Ag advisory committee and they had no objections to the contract as it was found to meet all the required minimum requirements and stuff. And then they did recommend that the four parcels be merged into a single parcel with the adoption of the contract.
Any questions?
The applicant was okay with the merge in the parcels?
Yeah, they indicated they were fine with that. I'm not sure if they are, I don't believe they are here in person, they may be on Zoom if they have any comments to that effect, but from what I understood, they were fine with the merge as proposed.
Well, this time open the public hearing. Any members of the public like to comment on this item?
Move to close public hearing.
Second, motion by Axe, second by Brown, close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Chair is unanimous?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to exempt the project under SEQA to approve the requested zone change and approve the Williamson Act contract, I guess the zone change from R1A to Ag and then accept all the findings.
And approve the ordinance.
Motion by Axe, second by Crute, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Chair is unanimous? Now, if item we're all here for. Item 5B, planning department, this considers the planning commission's recommendation to approve zone change, DC 24633, the zone change affects landing parcels in Supervisory District 5 which are currently zone X, special use district which is inconsistent with the land use designation adopted in 2016 general plan land use element update.
Good morning, Nicole Schumberg with the planning department. During the county's preparation of the 2016 general plan update, it was determined that the X special use district's history from the 1960s as a placeholder for future zoning classification had served its purpose and was overly restrictive in that it does not allow as a mix of permitted compatible uses as is typical most zoning districts. The zone change does not affect the allowed parcel size or residential development density as designated by the general plan. And this change aligns with the county's general plan, it means to ensure consistency and compliance with state and local regulations. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, the lead agency intends to consider a notice of exemption pursuant to section 15183A of the State SUGA guidelines for projects that are consistent with development density of an existing zoning, community plan or general plan policies for which an environmental impact report was certified into section 15061B3 of the common sense exemption. The planning commission, following a public hearing on October 8th, recommend approval of the SEQA exemption and the zone change.
Thank you. And Chuck, could you maybe address as far as the prospect of subdivisions coming in because of this change?
Good morning again, Chuck Beatty with the planning department. I just wanted to point out that we've had concerns that parcels that are included with these zone changes have been either scheduled for land division or development or that there have been developers talking to the county planning department about proposed developments. And none of the parcels that have been included in any of these zone changes for all five districts has anyone talked to us about future development. And in most cases, there's not infrastructure available to accommodate that if they have.
Infrastructure or water?
Primarily water, yes. But in cases where the lot sizes could be one acre, there's no water available.
Also, this is doing a zone change, but also in the general plan, you have like a density that dictates, you know, what could be put there.
Right, so that's either one acre, five acres, or up to 40 acres, and that's not proposed to be changed with the zone changes, the general plan density will remain the same.
Okay, well, thank you.
So Chuck, if it's zoned R1A, that's the zoning and there's no water, I'm sorry, Nicole, what, you know, how's that supposed to work out? I mean, don't people feel like if they buy R1A property that they're entitled to put a house on it and things like that, or residential structure?
Well, they buy a property, whether it's, you can't, I mean, if a person has a parcel, they can build a house on it. I think what I'd point to Frank, and maybe there is a person wanted to subdivide down by Highway 16124, you know, what, maybe a year ago was it Chuck? And the board turned down that subdivision request just because of lack of water.
Well, yeah, that was a subdivision, there were already some homes there and they were, I know that they had some problems with water.
Yeah.
If the parcel were an acre now, that, this, the zone change doesn't change whether or not they could approach the county to build a house. It's questionable whether or not they'd be able to construct a septic system that would accommodate, you know, a three-bedroom septic system, at least a conventional one, it would almost require an engineered type system.
Whether it's in X or R1A, they can still build a house in a parcel. Maybe, maybe in X, I think the use permit.
Technically, X requires the use permit for a house and this eliminates that unfortunate requirement.
Yeah, which would be wrong, I mean.
Technically, by the code, all the ones that are there now are non-conforming, so this eliminates that issue as well.
Okay. Well, this time we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody have any questions or comments, now's your time. Mr. Borg?
Kent Borg, live out outside of Plymouth, Chenito Valley, family had the knife boundary for quite a number of years. My biggest question and the biggest misunderstanding most people have here is these are still going to be designated as R1A. And the way I understand R1A is one house per acre. Whether you, building department says you cannot build 40 houses on 40 acres, it's still going to be one house per acre. So I just need that explained a little better to, I don't know, if you could explain it or what.
Yeah, they can.
If the zone, if it's changed and moved to one house per one acre, even though you can't get water or anything, there are going to be places in Amador County that you're still going to be able to put a bunch of houses in or put a subdivision in.
Realistically, Ken, there's all kinds of parcels right now zoned R1A or Ag all throughout the county. I mean, if you look, it's either Ag or R1A, it's pretty prevalent.
Once again, I just, I needed explained, R1A is one house per acre. And it changed to one house per acre.
Not all the time, you know, depends on the area, maybe five acres, you know, it's wherever the general plan is.
Yeah, general plan.
Like if I need just a better explanation how R1A means it could be five acres, 40 acres, whatever, then you're saying.
Right.
I don't understand it.
Maybe Nicole wants to help you out.
She's right behind you.
Okay, thank you.
You can stay there if you want, just sco over and she'll.
The minimum parcel size is determined by the general plan designation of the parcel, not by the zoning district, in this case it would be R1A. The zoning district, R1A, does allow one primary single-family dwelling per parcel as well as one accessory dwelling unit per parcel regardless of its parcel size. So, for example, a 40-acre parcel that is zoned R1A could have up to two single-family dwellings provided that they have adequate power, water and sewage elimination.
Okay. Just because it's zoned R1A doesn't mean you can put one house per acre. What you're saying just goes back to general plans, you have like, you have like the zoning and you have a general plan. Zoning says this is what can be done, the general plan says this is what you can do.
That's what I wanted to understand, so, yeah, I guess I understand a little better.
Yeah, and the only way you could change that is say you had a R1A zoning, what they're proposing to take these Xs into, and you said, hey, and the general plan says like 20 acre density. You say, I want to go one acre, one acre, and they'll say no. The only way you go to one acre, you have to go in and get a general plan change, which is a real pain in the rear and really hard to do. And then you might be able to do that, but that's, and you still have to go before the board and get approval of a subdivision.
So the density plan is really what makes it up?
Yeah.
That's the most important part of this whole.
And that's what we just, we talked about at the beginning here, is we had a place of 40 acres and they wanted to divide it into five acre parcels so they could develop it, you know, and there was just multiple things, but there was not water there to develop it. And in fact, their neighbors had a well on this original property in the contract, so would have, if they put extra homes on there, it would have detracted from the neighbors who had a well on the other parcel. So, you know, we do watch that portion of it too.
And they were, they had big water issues, I mean, like dry wells, a lot of problems with, you know, it wouldn't be right to put more in right next to them and cause more problems. There's water.
I have neighbors like that. All right, well, thank you guys, appreciate it.
What's old saying? What's old saying, whiskey or, waters for fighting, whiskey's for drinking? Something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Good morning. Amber Reed, Lawrence Road, I have a few questions. So per se, we have one piece of property, it's not subdivided at all. If there was plenty of water, we didn't have any water issues, we had our own home plus maybe a caretaker's home there. We had our own home plus maybe a caretaker's home there. We have a few children, and maybe in the future, they would like a home on the property as well. How would that work? Would we have to subdivide or?
Well, you're allowed a primary home and an ADU. Yeah, as standard. You know, as, your caretaker could be your ADU. So you're always allowed two homes on the property, on any property.
So then we would have to subdivide to let?
Possibly. What you want to do, too, is look at your parcel land. And some of these parcel lands were, they have like original patents from the mining days. It might be multiple parcels. And if you can bring those old parcels back, it's really an easy way to go. So you always want to go in and check and see how it was patented out. Let me, Chuck, and talk to you about this.
I think everything, I'm the calls here. Everything on Lawrence Lane is a forty-acre minimum, so I don't know how big your parcel is now. So it would require forty-acre parcels for each of those two houses.
Okay.
Unless you have old patents.
Unless it's in the Williamson Act, then the forty-acre parcels may or may not qualify. But if it's, if it's R one A or just Ag zoned forty acres would be your minimum.
Okay, and then another question that I have is agriculture. What is this changing for the agriculture side of things? Not versus, you know, not the housing development type stuff, but the agriculture.
There's no change.
Nothing really. It might really give them some more by right uses, because under X, any use you want to do out there takes a use permit. You have to apply to almost anything. Whereas if you're in R one A or Ag, there's a whole bunch of by right uses that you can do. So I'd say probably to open that up actually a little bit.
Ag uses are by right with either one. Either zone.
That's all that I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Holland, I live out off of Barney Road in the Willow Creek grant estate. And I was concerned how this rezoning would affect the property out there at the west side of Barney, which I believe was a Williamson Act parcel, large parcel. Is this allowing the rezoning to develop that large parcel from the Williamson Act?
Well, if it's in the Williamson Act, it would be AG.
Okay. So on the map, it shows that it was, here's Barney, Barney Road on the subdivision to the right is a subdivision, to the left of Barney Road is a large parcel that I was told was in the Williamson Act. But it's showing the red on that map that this rezoning would affect that. So that's what I'm concerned with.
Yeah, it's either going into R one A or Ag, but, you know, realistically, you could have ground on the Williamson Act zoned Ag ten years down the road, if somebody went and pulled it out of Ag, rolled it out. If they went to the county and said, hey, we want to change the zoning, we want to change the general plan, too, they could put in a subdivision if the county approved it.
Okay, so it has to go through all the processes, jump through all the hoops, okay?
And.
Just to clarify, that parcel was entered into non-renewal, so it was no longer in a Williamson Act contract. And once it left the contract, that's when it was zone changed to X and is now proposed to be zone changed to R one A.
Yeah, and so they can probably break that down in like whatever the general plan says, twenty or forty-acre parcels, if they can get permission from the county at some point.
What is the general plan zone throughout that?
I'm not sure. It would have a forty-acre minimum.
Okay, and when was that changed from the Williamson Act?
I'm not sure.
Okay, all right. All right, so I was just concerned that there'd be big subdivisions out there.
Yeah. Yeah, the thing is to do a real big subdivision out there, it's, we're going to have water problems.
Right.
And bringing in piped waters there. I won't say it never happened, probably not in my lifetime.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Michelle Key, and I'm the camp manager of Golden Valley Camp. I'm with the last property at the end of Barone Road in Volcano. And so on the map, it looks like the three red parcels on the far right of the map were right there, within three hundred feet. So I was just asking, as a year-round youth camp, and there's only one way into our camp property through Barone Road, how does the change of the zoning impact our camping facility and the campers coming in and out? And what, if anything changed in that around us, how does that impact our camp?
I'd say minimal. I mean, I think if I was a property owner out there, I'd be more worried about your impact on them than their impacts on you.
I think we need to get our planning staff up here to answer that.
Yeah, that's fine.
There should be no impact to the surrounding neighbors in this case.
Is a youth camp a by right use in R one A, or would that be grandfathered, or what?
If it's an existing use, it would be allowed by right as a grandfathered use. However, recreational uses would require conditional use permit if it's proposed to be a new use.
Okay, but there was no, they didn't have any advantage by being X running a youth camp, did they?
I don't believe so. And correct me if I'm wrong, you are the neighbor of a proposed zone change?
Yeah, it says on our packet here that we're within three hundred feet.
Okay.
And so you're right there, and those are the three red parcels there.
Okay.
So it's like, we only land is all on three sides of us. I think previous camp.
You speak into the mic, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm at the wrong podium. I think previous camp managers have had people come and ask for access through our camp facility to BLM land to do things. So that was a concern of our board. Would it impact traffic coming through the camp? Would it impact people being within three hundred feet of our boys' camp? You know, I wasn't sure within three hundred feet what exactly that meant. But it's not conducive to the camping, to having children there and minors, you know, if people are coming and going, re-zoning and redoing activities. And we just weren't aware of what was actually happening, because I don't understand, I don't speak this language. So, yeah, that's what I was asking.
So just to clarify, it should have very minimal to no impact from the zone change?
Okay. Good, okay, well, thank you. Any other members of the public? No zoomers?
No, at this time.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Forster, second by Brown, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Here's unanimous.
I'll make a motion to accept the adequacy of sequoque in this case, approve all of the requested zone changes from X to R one A, accept the findings, and approve the ordinance.
Okay.
Or the resolution, I'm sorry.
Yeah, to R one A and Ag.
Oh, R one A and Ag, yeah.
Okay. Motion by Axe, and a second by, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Here's unanimous. Well, thank you. Thanks. Next, we're going to go back to regular agenda. Here's item four D. This is a discussion possible action relative to the county participating, participation on the Ecological Resources Committee, the ERC, for relicensing of PG&E's hydro projects in Amber County.
So I, since this went on the agenda, we were able to get some additional information. And it appears that it may not be as straightforward to become a member of this. This committee, as the email may have suggested, the committee itself was created through the settlement agreement of the previous relicensing. And that settlement agreement names the parties, names the members of the ERC. It does allow for additional members, but it requires that the members of the ERC unanimously approve any new members. So theoretically, it is still possible to become a member, but there may be additional hoops to jump through. Apparently, the Amador Water Agency has become a member of this committee, so we could reach out to them to see what they did and whether or not they felt the county, they would, the committee would have benefited from the county being a participant as well.
Wouldn't hurt, wouldn't hurt to do that, yeah.
And the way, the way it sounds, we don't have to be a member to comment on it in the future.
That's true, you don't need to be a member of the ERC to participate in the relicensing.
Yeah, it's just, if you're a member of the ERC, you're probably, they're a little more ongoing, to be fair.
Presumably.
In actions that are taken on some of the, as far as remediation workers, ecological work, in the flow, stream flows and stuff like that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the board understood that it's not just raising your, you know, raising your hand and saying, yes, add us to the list. It potentially is more involved than that.
Yeah, I looked at it quite a while back, and it looked a little bit, almost exclusive, I guess you could call it.
Yeah, well, the settlement, it was created by the settlement. The only parties are the, basically, the parties to the settlement. It does provide for a way to add new members to this committee, but it requires unanimous approval. So you sort of have to do what they all want you to do to become a member.
Yeah, I remember looking at this a while back, it was like PG&E, the Water Agency, Foothill Conservancy, was there's like some fisheries group, too, I think?
Uh, yeah, I could, I could look it up if you want me to.
That's okay, yeah.
So could AWA be kind of like our point of contact on this committee instead of having an extra person?
Reach out to AWA and see, you know, what their take is and whether they see value in the county being a member or what the value that they get out of it. And maybe the county decides that that's important to us as well.
Because who from the county would be on this committee, do you think?
Probably be a board member or?
Be a board member?
I wouldn't see a staff member, really. Could be, but I think, I don't think Mr. Ily would want to be doing that, would you?
Not unless you wanted me to, I wouldn't be raising my hand. A board member with staff support would be, I think, adequate.
But we have those dishes that need washing.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to look into it more. And like you said, it is unanimous, so that could get very interesting, to say the least.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can find out what steps AWA had to sort of go through and what their process was.
Yeah, it could be helpful.
So.
See any value to it for us?
So we can check in with them and then bring it back?
Please.
Yeah.
So this all has to do with the FERC license upon McCully?
It's related to it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, I don't, it'd be nice to have some more information, but I don't want it to be a bad thing. I mean, water's, water's important, river's important. Any comments, members of the public like to comment? I saw Mr. Barco back there, he looked like he was pretty anxious, helping at the bit.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm Pete Barco, Executive Director of Foothill Conservancy. Basically, just to second what Greg already outlined, in terms of the ERC was formed as part of the settlement agreement with the last FERC relicensing of the PG&E power complex. This is in 2001. And it basically serves as a mechanism to oversee and implement the terms of that FERC relicensing and the settlement agreement that was part of that. As Greg described, there is this application, there's basically an application process. AWA recently went through it. It does involve basically participating in ERC meetings for a year and approval from the existing members of the ERC. And these include various government representatives, PG&E, Foothill Conservancy, of course, and also, but also American Whitewater and Friends of the River have representatives that attend these meetings. So, and generally speaking, it's a bit more complicated, but it is designed as a consensus-based decision-making process in which the decisions made out of that group are, requires the consensus of all the members of it. So for things like new members or policy recommendations. But generally speaking, this is fairly technical work. It has to do with things like appropriate water flows for habitat versus power generation. So that's one aspect of it. In terms of the new, of the upcoming FERC relicensing, I believe the PG&E's, both PG&E and East Bay Mud's FERC relicensing are up in 2030. And this process is typically a five-to-seven-year licensing renewal process. So the ERC could serve as one avenue of input, but it's not going to be the exclusive avenue of input for the FERC licensing process. I've already been to a couple of East Bay Mud events that have another one coming up, an open house at Lake Party at the end of the month on the 29th. So there are plenty of, there's lots of different topics involved. Recreation, habitat, power generation, safety, all the various things involved with dams on the river. So there's also, there'll be a variety of ways to provide input into this process as it moves forward. And it is a pretty lengthy rolling process that lasts typically five to seven years. That's what I have, if I can answer any questions.
I appreciate the clarifications.
Sure.
You have a zoomer whenever you're ready.
Yep, we're ready.
Go ahead, Catherine, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, hi, this is Catherine Evitt. I'm the past president of the Foothill Conservancy. My husband, Pete Bell, has represented the Foothill Conservancy on the ERC since its founding and was one of the people who negotiated the hydroelectric license settlement that the ERC implements. Mr. Barco and county council pretty accurately described the requirements for joining the ERC. What they basically are is an entity has to participate in a constructive way in the monthly ERC meetings for one year. Those meetings are held on the third Tuesday of the month. In fact, just, one just concluded, so they, excuse me, they conflict with the Board of Supervisors meetings. At the end of that one-year period, the members of the ERC decide whether they want to allow the applicant to join. One of the things the applicant has to do in order to join the ERC is to sign the settlement agreement for the hydroelectric license, which obligates them legally to uphold and defend that settlement agreement and that license as issued and approved years ago. So it's kind of a complicated process. And also, as far as the upcoming relicensing goes, any entity can participate in the relicensing, and there will be a number of different entities that will do that. The ERC is not going to be representing, I don't think, the whole group in the relicensing, all the individual members will be making their own comments and participating in the license process, just as many of them are participating in the McCully battery project FERC application now. Also, the ERC cannot change the terms of the license. And so that's a really important thing to note, is that, you know, they're in charge of overseeing the implementation, reviewing the annual monitoring, helping determine how the monitoring money is spent, but they have no authority to change the license. So we just wanted you to know these things. It is, it is a time-consuming thing, it is technical, it requires regular participation, and to participate requires approval of all the existing ERC members. So, thank you.
You know, yeah, this is President Ero, Ms. Evitt. A question, can the public attend those meetings?
Yes. My husband, who's standing right here, says yes.
Okay.
That was kind of like good old boys' club to me.
May I respond to that?
If you'd like, yes.
Well, I would, because, you know, Amador County had the opportunity to participate in the relicensing of the PG&E project, in all the, uh, negotiations that went into the settlement agreement, they chose not to do so. Amador Water Agency also chose not to do so. So, the parties to the settlement are those parties who went to more than one hundred meetings in one year with PG&E in order to work out all the details of the license agreement and the settlement. So, the, if the county wants to put in the time and energy to help shape the license, the time to do that is when the license is being considered, not, you know, complain that they're not a party later. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Not sure it should be that cumbersome to become a member.
Yeah, well, it's a, we can talk about it. Um, any other members of the public like to comment?
Seeing none, um, what's the board's pleasure? I mean, I'd like to have a little more information, um, but actually Catherine, if you, if you could, I, I wouldn't mind if you send us, um, you said it's every third Tuesday, uh, like maybe the, the date and location of the meeting, so if a board member wanted to go to it, they, just see what goes on, they could, if you could, uh.
Supervisor Neto, I would suggest you get that information through the license coordinator that was cited in Mr. Bennett's, um, email to the Board of Supervisors. The meetings are primarily held remotely, and as I said, one just finished, so they do conflict with your existing meetings and the time.
You said every third Tuesday though, right?
Yeah.
And we meet in the second, fourth Tuesdays?
Well, I may have the dates wrong, but anyway, it was today, so it does conflict with your meeting schedule. I get confused about which month it was.
Okay.
But at any rate, it, it's, it's the same, it's the same day of the month, every month, and it's been set that way for a long time. And the meetings are coordinated by the license coordinator for PG&E, whose contact information is in Mr. Bennett's email, so it's probably.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Bennett then, um, but thank you.
You're welcome.
We're good to go. I guess we'll continue to a later meeting. Uh, with that, we're going to move on to, um, item four E. This is a discussion of possible action relative to an ordinance repealing in part section seventeen eight nine point oh two regarding the merger of parcels.
Greg? Yes, thank you. Um, this is essentially cleanup, um, to, to get a provision of county code consistent with state law. Um, it has come up a couple times, um, raised some questions, and so I think it's better for the public and for the county to get this cleaned up. Essentially, there's, uh, with, um, with pars, parcel mergers, there's a provision in our code that essentially requires the applicant or the county to impose a condition that the, uh, the, when there's a, or for example, a homeowners association, the condition as it's, as it's written would require them to either pay both of the original assessments or get permission from the entity imposing the assessment to, to waive that requirement. Um, and that, that county code was passed, uh, prior to a change in state law, uh, which I referred to in my memo, which is, um, section six, 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 four, four, one, two, uh, D of the, um, government code. It limits what the county can consider in, in acting on parcel mergers, and it would exclude us from imposing that kind of a condition. And so, uh, I've looked back through mergers back to, you know, through the years to other, um, uh, of, of our surveyors, and basically this condition, um, stopped being imposed once they found it inconsistent with state law. Uh, so, in a nutshell, this is just cleanup.
Sounds like we haven't been doing what we should be doing though, by our own rules.
We, we can't enforce, we can't enforce county code that's inconsistent with state law.
I didn't read, is that in here though? We can't enforce county code that's inconsistent with state law?
That's, we can't, we can't require a condition that, when, when state law says, these are the four things you can consider when, when acting on a, um, parcel merger, we, we cannot impose some other condition that's not authorized by state law.
But, doesn't state law provide for this? If you want to split the, if you want to combine two parcels, you pay, uh, you know, the fees or the benefit assessment for both parcels?
I don't believe so.
Oh, no?
It, it's been county code that we've required that in the past.
Yeah, cause that, that doesn't seem fair, that you can buy two parcels, put one house on it, merge them together, and then you don't pay.
Well, state law has now changed. It's essentially up to, um, up to the homeowners association. They have rules that say you have to pay both fees, that's their issue, not the county's issue.
Okay, but that's still kind of a harder enforcement mechanism, more difficult. So, there's no way that we can, we can make that happen then?
That's, yeah.
Why would, I mean, why would the state allow that to work that way?
I don't know, the state, the state, it says, uh, shall limit its review and approval to a determination of whether or not the resulting parcels will conform to the general plan, specific plan of any zoning and building ordinances. So, that's been interpreted to exclude a condition like we have, which is you also have to either continue paying both assessments or, um, getting a waiver.
Well, can you make that a condition of approval, you know, you know, that you have to sign an agreement that you would pay both? Can we do that?
I don't think so, no.
Oh, really?
No, because that's outside of those things that we get to look at.
Then can't we say we're not going to approve it for this reason? We're not going to approve your merger because you.
I don't believe so, no.
We can't do that?
No.
You and I have talked many times, this, this presents a really tough situation for the homeowners associations, because then the person does something and they're immediately in violation of the rules, like out in Comanche, they're immediately in violation, and then they come after them with the force of law, and can we at least advise the people that you are in a homeowners association?
I think they do, I think they do advise them.
It sounds like sometimes they do and sometimes not.
Well, I think people hear what they want to hear and disregard other things.
If we can make that a, a, uh, hard, hard line, um, I don't know what you want to call it, a notification that you're in a homeowners association, I, what do you think Chuck?
Well, I mean, we, we don't necessarily know what the homeowners association will say, I don't know how we would even enforce them.
That's why the people need to go to the homeowners association and find out if there are additional steps, or do they preclude them from doing something like this? I mean, we're going through two right now that we approved, uh, one was a merger and the other one was something else, and both of them are being challenged by the homeowners association in Comanche.
Yes, I understand, this has come up and, and the language is not enforced, uh, by staff, because it is contrary to state law and puts us in a position of enforcing a private, uh, private rules.
I think we should do, we should do our best to, uh, have a list of the homeowners associations and tell these people they may be subject to following the rules of the association.
We can, we can develop a, at least the, the application form, make sure that this is written on the application form, that if you're in a, if you're in a, a homeowners association, you, you need to check with them, because you may, uh, there may be rules that apply to whether you can merge your parcel.
Yeah, and I talked to the gentleman that was in here at our last meeting, and they're kind of going after him now, and he's going to have to fight him to spend money, and it just doesn't seem right. But I understand, we can't be bound by, we can't do this because state law says we can't. I guess, it's kind of like, like we're chasing our tails sometimes.
Yeah, I think maybe you want, maybe let, let people be aware of that, but don't, don't phrase it in such a way they think they can't do it, as far as doing the merger. Say, hey, look, maybe you can do this merger, but be, just beware, you may be sued. Otherwise, you, you could turn, you, you could make it, otherwise you could put it in, in, in there where it looks like they can't even do it, as far as, you know, you must get this as part of the approval process, which according to state law is not correct, I guess.
We, I'll, I can work with surveying and make sure that there's, it's clear in this part of the application that, that, uh, if, if they're in the homeowners association, there may be rules that apply to them that relate to their merger.
Not saying they can't do it, but.
No, the county, yeah.
Okay.
I, you know, this brings a problem upon the homeowners association too. I, like, their president, Comanche, Comanche told me at the last meeting night, and that you guys keep passing things that, that no can't be done.
Right, and, and this has come up at, at least twice with the, that homeowners association, and, and the response that we've provided them is the same.
About ten times.
Which is that we, we can't, we can't enforce that, the condition that county code was written, because state law subsequent to county code is sort of limited what we can, what we can, uh, review.
Uh, Greg, so this, does this only apply to HOA rules then? Because, uh, for example, the county has a lot of, um, you know, like residential neighborhoods where the, um, the road is on, you know, on a county maintained road, but they pay an assessment, and if they were to merge two parcels, would they, would the county still be able to charge them for two parcels of assessment? You know what I mean?
No, I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe if, if, if a parcels are merged that you would have two separate assessments, you'd have one.
Yeah, but it, it would be twice as much, wouldn't it?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know how county, I don't know how county, like county deals with, uh, those kind of, those kind of assessments and mergers.
So, the only way to fix this would be to get, uh, Government Code six, six, four, one, two changed?
Any members of the public like to comment on this issue?
Seeing none, looking for action. So, we really don't have a choice to not vote for this.
I would say that's about correct.
He voted no.
I'll begrudgingly make a motion to, uh, approve the, um, zone, uh, the code change or changes to, um, uh, section seventeen point eight nine point zero two zero regarding merger parcels.
And waive the reading too.
And waive the reading too, right?
Like a. We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed?
No.
Here is four one.
We should have said no. We've got to speak up for me too. We have Forrester.
Yep, next we have item four F, this review and possible approval of October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, we're surprised in meeting minutes.
I didn't see anything.
I'd move approval with, um, two minor corrections, there's some place, let's take a look, there they are, two minor corrections.
Yes, I had a couple too, so, a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion by Forrester, second by Brown, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Here is Nannos. Uh, now we have, uh, addition, item four G, this is, was, was item one A on the consent agenda, this four G and Redger agenda, and this Amador County Airport approval of a hangar ground lease number one fifty-five, agreeing with the estate of Dave Tilden Richards.
So glad Nicole was here earlier. Good morning, gentlemen, Dave Shepherd Airport Manager. Um, I do have one correction I saw on the draft lease, page three, the rental agreement, that the word seventy-four should be deleted, the actual amount is one thirty-seven eighty per month.
Okay.
I think Greg had some comments as well, or any questions you have.
Say that change again, Dave.
Um, page three, the top of the page, under monthly rent, uh, seventy-four needs to be deleted.
Okay.
It should be one hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents per month.
So, the, the issue with this particular lease is that the current lease expires at the end of this month, and, um, this was invol, this was, this lease was sort of included in, in the, in a package of leases that the, the board had previously given direction to sort of extend the, this new lease template to these, um, these tenants. Um, and, and provisions of the, of this lease, uh, say that, uh, any improvements that are there after thirty days transfer to the county after the terminate, after the end of the lease. Um, and the little wrinkle is that, uh, so the, uh, the original lease was the father put into the trust, transferred to the son when the father passed, and then the son has recently passed, uh, without a will, so the, the matter's in probate. Um, and it looks like, uh, the spouse of the son, the deceased son, will be the one who would inherit the right to this asset, the lease slash hangar, um, but that, that's still ongoing, and so, um, and so, the reason it was pulled off primarily from, from my perspective was, um, you know, if there's, for some reason, the spouse does not take the asset, they shouldn't have the lease. They shouldn't be the one who, you know, I assume there's some different process, like if, if this became county property and was up for lease renewal, it wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't just, you wouldn't just pick, it'd be there's a waiting list or some other priority of who the lease is offered to. Um, and so, the proposal that I came up with was basically to do this lease for a year, um, to allow that probate piece to sort of resolve itself, and then assuming that the spouse gets the asset, that we could then extend that lease term, uh, out the, you know, to the original twenty. So, let's say if it's a year, and then we'd add nineteen, it would get them to twenty.
And this is based on that previous negotiations we did for the prior twelve tenants, what we did the last six months, and you approved in the last sixty days.
That'd be fine, they give them a long enough price, sort everything out, I would think, um, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
So, the, the other little wrinkle is, um, the, the problem is, is that the lease, the original lease will expire before you have another meeting, so we're trying to get this dealt with. It doesn't necessarily have to happen as long as, you know, we're still in negotiation, but, um, that's part of the reason it was put on this meeting, um.
You're looking for a one-year, one-year lease, basically?
Yeah, and I, I've been exchanging, um, emails with the attorney for the, for the spouse administrator of the estate, um. Um, and so essentially right now, what I'm asking, what I'm recommending is, uh, authorization for a one-year lease with, um, either the administrator of the estate or the spouse or, or whatever. Sort of authorize that, uh, and then once we finalize, once I finalize it with the, uh, attorney, that we can get that, that lease extension, or the new lease signed. Cause I don't, I don't know whether it's, uh, the spouse as an individual, the spouse as the administrator, uh, the estate of, uh, the son, uh, I'm not exactly sure how to finalize the lease, who the other party to the lease is.
Okay.
So it's more authorization.
Almost holding a limo until you figure that out.
Authorization to, uh, so approve the lease pending, sort of nailing down that detail.
Okay. Oh, so you wanna make that a motion?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion by Brown.
Second.
Second by Ax, all in favor?
Uh, that, that's the one-year term with the change to the rent.
With that change. One-year rent.
One thirty, one thirty-seven eighty then?
Right.
Okay, um, a motion in a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Janice, there you go, Dave.
Thank you.
Your daughter did a very nice job today too, by the way. Your daughter did a very nice job today. So we adjourn until Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, at nine o'clock AM. Thank you.